Calling the meeting to order. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Paul.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Starkey.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lamack.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holstein.
Here.
Mr. Weinfahl.
Here.
Mary Havakorm.
Thank you. Before we proceed with presentations, I'd like to take a moment of silence in memory of Hunter Gutierrez. If you remember, his family was here a few days after he disappeared, and we were all praying and hoping for a better outcome. And so we send our condolences to the family and keep them in our hearts and our minds and take a few moments of silent prayer. Thank you. I'd like to call on Mr. Lewis just for an introduction.
Mayor, thank you so much. Just so everyone knows, Ranuka Mohammed, our Utilities Director, is leaving us. Just wanted to be known. I know there was an email sent out in her stead in the interim. David Stanbaugh will be our interim Utilities Director.
Thank you.
So if you want to stand, just so you can be seen and...
I would put a name, a face to the name. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, thank you. And again, just to thank Ranuka for her time and service here with the last 10 years working together. She's brought us so far along, and I just want to thank her in this public setting.
Thank you. I know a couple of weeks ago, I put my hand on your hand, and I kind of looked at you because I didn't know if I was supposed to have known at that time. But I wish you luck and a lot of success. You've done wonderful things for the town, and we certainly appreciate your time. Thank you. We have some presentations tonight. Our first one is FAU EMS Fellowship Program. Our Fire Chief is and our wonderful Dr. Peter Antevi and Dr. Charles Ingram.
Chuck one two. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Administration staff, Town residents. I just want to take a moment and follow up on agreement you approved a few more months back with Florida Atlantic University to collaborate on our EMS Fellowship Program. With that in mind, I'd like to take a minute just to introduce Battalion Chief Neil Mira, who oversees our EMS division. Sometimes the people that do all the work aren't the face of the organization, but he oversees our EMS division. So he's been working closely with Dr. Antevi and Dr. Ingram on this program, which is designed to further enhance the already excellent service and care that I believe we provide to our residents. So he's going to bring up a couple of details on that. So I'll turn it over to Chief Neil Mira.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor Paul, Councilmembers, Town Administration. I wanted to take just a very brief moment to introduce myself. As Chief Gonzalez mentioned, my name's Neil Mera. I'm a Battalion Chief of Emergency Medical Services. I also want to take this opportunity to thank you all. It is a team effort for your continued support of our department and those initiatives and programs that enable us to better serve our community. One of those we're going to talk about here. Davie Fire Rescue is very proud to partner with the FAU Charles Schmidt College of Medicine on the launch of the EMS Physician Fellowship Program. Speaking on this program is our Medical Director. You all know him, Dr. Peter Antevi, Associate Medical Director, Dr. Charles Ingram. They bring their expertise and vision to this important effort. And again, I really want to thank you for your continued support. I really look forward to this program. I think it will take us even far forward than we already are, and I really think we're in a great, great spot. So, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Antevi.
I'll hold it right now. Good evening, everybody. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and our Councilmembers. Great to see everybody. I'm here to brag a little bit on the people behind me. Obviously, Chief Gonzalez, you've been an incredible mentor to me and just a great resource for this entire community. Chief Mira, another superstar as well. Why are we here today? The person standing behind me is Dr. Charlie Ingram. I've been with you guys since 2010, and I've been so blessed. This is really the most incredible town, and it's been just an amazing thing to see what we have done here, but it's getting better. Now, why is it getting better? So as a Medical Director, I chose to add on an Associate Medical Director, but he's like the real deal. Okay? This guy comes from Yale. He ran fire departments that may be 10 times the size of what we have here. He ran fellowship programs, which we'll talk to you about in a minute. And he came here like just on the ground running, right? For those of you who are in the audience to know that we've done so many great things here at the Town of Davie, we have even blood available to people who are in traffic accidents. In fact, two days ago, we saved the life of a gentleman who had a cardiac arrest, and we were on scene for 33 minutes. And today, we found out that he's perfectly normal. That doesn't happen everywhere in this country. But what I want to talk about today is this thing called an EMS Fellowship. I'll pass it over to Dr. Ingram. But just a little bit of background that I became a Medical Director because before my time, there was no such thing as an EMS Medical Director. The House of Medicine now has a subspecialty. You have to get board certified. I did not go through that process. There is a process now that if you want to become a Medical Director, you have to do an additional year of training. And so for that, this is the first ever in South Florida. We started it here once again. And the person who's going to be leading that charge is our Associate Medical Director, Dr. Charlie Ingram. So Charlie, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mayor Paul, Councilmembers, Admin, guests as well. Pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly tonight. Like Peter mentioned, absolutely, this is now a fully board-specialized and board-certified role. The future of EMS medical direction is a board certification, just like cardiology and internal medicine, et cetera. And the only way to become board-certified is through an EMS Fellowship. And so when we say Fellowship, there are so many different meanings in the world. In the world of medicine, it means that you're taking an additional year after you are already a physician and you are already board-certified or board-eligible in a specialty. And so in EMS, we have board-certified emergency physicians. They could work at any of our local ERs, and they make the decision to take a year for decreased pay, for more hours, to really dedicate their time to learn how to be an EMS Medical Director. It is an incredible thing. The board has existed since 2010. The fellowship process only started in 2013 with the first board exam at that point. There are about 80 different fellowships in the entire country. We are by far the furthest south for the entire country. I looked that up, as well as the only now in South Florida. The closest one beyond us is Orlando. And so we offer now extremely competitive and extremely well-rounded fellowship program thanks to partnerships like this with the Town of Davie. That is what truly makes our training program special. We have two fellows this year, and we expect to have fellows kind of continually. The cycle of the process is July through June is their academic year. And so with that, we can now offer both this specialized training program to the fellows who get incredible benefits from all of the aspects of this town, as well as the Fire Department and the incredible leadership of the Fire Department and organization of the Fire Department supported by the town. But also, the town gets a massive benefit, right? The number of physician hours that the fire medics will get training will go up exponentially this year. They are committed. They are taking a pay cut for a reason, and they're incredibly, incredibly committed to both the town and now the program as well. And so it's this partnership that we're really excited about. They've been kind of getting to know the system by riding the rescues, and you'll see them around town on the rescues. And with that, like, they bring an EM physician scope of practice. They can do physician-level care in someone's backyard, in someone's home, or two nights ago on a tennis court. And so it is incredibly, incredibly beneficial, kind of multidirectional. At Yale, I was a fellow there. I graduated. I became faculty there. I ran... I was the Associate Medical Director for numerous fire departments and the system there and ran an EMS Physician Response Team there, and that's what we're developing here. And so I think that it is an incredible improvement across the system. We're extremely honored that we have the ability to interact with the Town of Davie, as well as be so involved in the Fire Department. The administration of the Fire Department and Chief Mira specifically have welcomed the fellows with open arms, and it is much, much appreciated. And we hope that over the course of the next months to years to the future, that this will make a massive impact in the EMS care for not only the town, because I think that we're decently well taken care of at the moment, however, also the entire region. Like, there's such a huge opportunity. Peter and I are two of four EMS board-certified physicians in the entire county of Broward. So there's a need, and we hope to fill that need, and the Town of Davie is the first step in that. So we much appreciate it. If there's any questions, comments, we're open to them. If not, the biggest thanks. I'll introduce both the fellows. First is Dr. Moshi Benjio. He's in the back here. And then next is Dr. Janil Parmar. So they'll be with us through June, unless I can figure out a way to hold them longer. I'll let you know. But yeah, so much appreciated.
Thank you so much. This is such a wonderful addition, and we have the best fire rescue and the best EMS physicians. Dr. Antevi has been such a standard bearer for us for all these years. We appreciate everything that everybody's done, and we're looking forward to seeing you take your place in the fold. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Paul.
Next, I'd like to call on Ariana R. Sino, our Public Relations Coordinator, and Cameron Tippett to... Okay, you're both coming up, to talk about our Centennial Celebration.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Councilmembers. I am Ariana Bresenial, Public Relations Coordinator.
And I'm Cameron Tippett, Public Relations Assistant.
And we're here today to share details of one of the most anticipated events in our town's history, which is the Town of Davie's Centennial Celebration. On Saturday, November 8th, 2025, we will be hosting a Centennial Celebration at the Bergeron Rodeo Grounds, located at 4201 Rodeo Way. This event commemorates a century of trailblazing and marks the town's milestone of 100 years since its original incorporation in 1925. Event gates will open at 5:30 PM for attendees to enjoy photo booths, caricature drawings, mechanical bull rides, and much more. At 6:00 PM, the Centennial Celebration will continue with a variety of activities that reflect Davie's cowboy town spirit. Attendees can enjoy a beer garden, live music by Whiskey County Band, and a performance by saxophonist John Sacks. Additionally, the South Florida Cloggers will perform a special decade show onstage. On-site vendors will include the Davie Cooper City Chamber of Commerce, Davie Women's Club Berry Rose Cafe, Old Davie School Museum and Event Venue, Yellow Beehive Custom Hats, and more. At 6:30 PM, we will host a Centennial Ceremony that will feature remarks from Mayor Judy Paul and the dedication of a time capsule. Our team has compiled a list of items to include in the time capsule suggested by Davie residents through surveys at past events. Additionally, the mayor and Town Councilmembers will each contribute an item to the time capsule. The event will conclude with a laser light show at 9:00 PM. The Centennial Celebration will be open to Davie residents only, aiming to prioritize residents as we celebrate this historic milestone. Registration will begin on Monday, August 25th, 2025, at 7:30 AM. So I'm just going to briefly go over on how individuals can go ahead and preregister. Registration can be done in person here at the Pine Island Multipurpose Center. However, if somebody has registered for any of our programs or classes in the past, they can also register using WebTrack System, using their username and password. Each household will be granted one ticket for the event, and you can also call our facility here at 954-327-3941 to receive a unique username and password to register online, if they've never done so before. Individuals can also come in person to the multipurpose center and have staff assist them with registering. So again, one ticket will be registered per household, and individual tickets will be emailed to registrants. Upon entry, staff will also verify tickets, and we ask everyone to please just preregister early. A key part... Oh, excuse me. A key part of our celebration is recognizing the incredible individuals who have shaped our community. The Town of Davie is inviting residents to be a part of this once-in-a-century celebration. In recognition of the Town of Davie's 100th birthday, we will be honoring residents who are 90 years or older at the Centennial Celebration on November 8th, 2025. To be eligible, honorees must be 90 years or older by November 1st, 2025. They will need to provide proof of age and identity, which may include a photo ID, such as a passport or a valid Florida ID, or a birth certificate. If you or someone you love qualifies, please visit www.davy-fl.gov/centennial90 to submit a recognition form. Applications are due by October 24th, 2025, at 11:59 PM. So for our Centennial event, we will be offering sponsorship opportunities for businesses of all sizes to take advantage of for a brand exposure during a historic event that we have anticipated attendance of more than 600 individuals. Sponsors can look forward to increasing the brand awareness within the Davie community and expect their logo to be placed on our event signage, programs, and promotional materials, as well as recognition and announcements across our social media and website. Also available will be the opportunity to participate in the event by hosting a table to directly engage with our attendees. Our team will be curating the sponsorship packages, and once all the details are finalized, we'll go ahead and make it available to share with our local Davie businesses. I'm excited to announce that we are working with The Wild Mug, a recent Let's Talk Business recipient, to offer an exclusive 15% discount to Town of Davie employees in November. This discount is available to town staff who purchase a minimum of one drink and one empanada in the month of November. To receive the discount, employees must present their Town of Davie ID badge. We are also collaborating on a seasonal drink named after the Town of Davie's Centennial Celebration, which will be available for all customers to purchase. More details will be announced soon. To conclude, we invite everyone to join us as we celebrate 100 years of trailblazing.
Very exciting. Yeah, well, goes our horse. Thank you so much. It's going to be very exciting. Girls have been working very, very hard on this. It's going to be a lot of fun. Our last presentation, I'd like to call on Debbie Thomas, our Economic Development Manager, to talk about our economic partnership with Southeastern, Nova Southeastern University.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council, Town Staff, and members of the public. My name is Debbie Thomas, and I'm the Economic Development Manager for the Town of Davie. I'm thrilled to announce the start of an educational series dedicated to enhancing financial literacy for the Davie community. A few months ago, Councilmember Starkey suggested the town incorporate financial literacy courses into our community resource toolbox. This idea was later discussed and approved during the 2025 Vision and Goal Setting Session, and I'm excited to share that we will be launching this initiative in September. While the town currently collaborates with FAU's Small Business Development Center for business development courses, the forthcoming Financial Literacy Series will concentrate on personal finances. This series will be open to the public with priority given to businesses and residents of the Town of Davie. To carry out this initiative, the town is collaborating with one of our longstanding educational partners, Nova Southeastern University. NSU's Alvin Sherman Library offers a lifelong learning program titled "You Got This", which has provided various courses in financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and career development over the past five years. Together, the town and NSU's Alvin Sherman Library have developed a tailored series aimed at teaching personal financial skills. This is a series of six classes, which will include the following subjects: Managing Your Income and Credit to Build Wealth; Finance for the Single Person; Strategies for More Efficient Shopping; The Psychology Behind Planning Your Future; Practical Investments; And What Every U.S. Taxpayer Should Know About When Filing Tax Returns. The series is scheduled to commence on September 16th from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, continuing every other Tuesday thereafter, with the final class taking place on November 18th. All classes will be held in person at the NSU library and virtually. Though both platforms are open and free for the public, Town of Davie residents and business owners are given priority for all in-person events. Registration is open through NSU's library website, and all are welcome to participate. On a similar note, I'd also like to announce that FAU Davie and Hispanic Unity will also be hosting an entrepreneurship boot camp for Spanish speakers on Thursdays in September at the FAU Davie campus. We will be posting information about both events on our social media, so everyone can register as you see fit. At this time, I'd like to invite Susan Berkman, Engagement and Partnership Librarian for the NSU Alvin Sherman Library, to say a few words.
Thank you, and good evening to the council and all that are present here today. My name is Susan Berkman. I am the Engagement and Partnership Librarian, a new position that's been created at the Alvin Sherman Library at Nova Southeastern University. I have been running the financial literacy programs since 2020, even before the pandemic started, and we have really built up a brand with "You Got This", and we're thrilled that Town of Davie is going to support it and be part of it. And we look forward to educating the town.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We have so many wonderful things that are going on here, and our relationships with our education center have been phenomenal, and we appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go on to the consent agenda. I'm going to pull eight, nine, and 10. Does anybody else want to pull anything? Seeing none. Mr. Lewis, did you want to pull anything? Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus eight, nine, and 10?
Motion to approve consent agenda, minus eight, nine, and 10.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. That will take us to the public hearing portion. Number 11 is an application. Mr. Weinfahl, would you read the resolution by title?
Yes, Mayor. A Resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, Taking Final Action on the Application for the Certification of the Off-Premise Digital Sign, which is to be located at 15990 Southwest 14th Street. Application OPS 25-1, providing for separability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
This is a public hearing. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak for or against this item, you can come before at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any comments or discussion from council? I just wanted to say that I was very pleased with this, the way it is proceeded. It gives Davie, the Town of Davie, a great deal of exposure, and the Boys and Girls Club, a great deal of exposure. We appreciate that. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, number 11, application.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Number 12 is also an application. Mr. Weinfahl, would you read the resolution by title?
Yes, Mayor. A Resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, Taking Final Action on the Application for the Certification of the Off-Premise Digital Sign, which is to be located at 15701 Southwest 41st Street. Application OPS 25-2, providing for separability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. It's a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak for or against this, you may come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Has there anyone in council? I'll just say ditto on what I said before.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve, number 12, application?
Motion to approve, number 12, application. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Number 13 is a code amendment. Mr. Weinfahl, would you read the ordinance by title, please?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the Town of Davie, Florida, Amending the Following Sections of Chapter 12 Land Development Code. Article 3, Use Regulations, Division 2, General Regulations. Article 10, Planning and Development, Division 2, Rezoning, Text Amendments, Special Permits, Variances, and Vacations or Abandonment of Rights of Way. Providing for separability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date. Providing for separability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. If any member of the public wishes to speak for or against this, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from council?
Nope.
And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Quigley, the P and Z voted unanimously for this, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the code amendment?
Motion to approve, number 13, code amendment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna skip around a little bit, so we don't hold some people here indefinitely. I'm gonna do the Ben Hada variance, which is number 16. Mr. Weinfall, would you read the resolution by title?
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, taking final action on variance application V25-057 Ben Hada, providing for separability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If any members of the public wish to speak, come forward at this time. Is the applicant here? Is there anything you would like to say? Okay. You've been through it already, so I know. Okay, so I'll close the hearing. There any discussion by council? Okay, I'm just was pleased that some corrections were made, and you went back, and I understand P and Z did approve this at their meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve variance number 16.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, next I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take 17, variance. Mr. Weinfall, would you read the resolution by title, please?
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, taking final action on variance application V25-065 Marty, providing for separability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. This is an open public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, you may come forward at this time.
Good evening, Town Council. We were here last meeting to talk about this variance for a gate that Ms. Marty put on her property, replace an existing gate that had been there and had been properly permitted. You all may recall that we have 12 letters of no objection to this gate, and that unfortunately at the, before the zoning board, when they had their hearing, they were not aware that there were any letters of no objection, and so their ruling was based on not having that information. There's only one person objecting to this gate. It happens to be her neighbor. She's in the unfortunate position that her neighbor is trying to weaponize this process against her and has filed many, many, many different complaints of various kinds, and this is just one front of that war that's ongoing, unfortunately. We would all like to live in a place where we can relax when we get home, but not all people get that privilege and benefit. Ms. Marty checked with the town before she put in this new gate, and she was advised that no permit would be required for the gate. We offered that evidence at the last hearing. The new gate, she put an anti-theft backing on it. The type and style that's allowed in the town, it's just that she put an anti-theft backing because one of her vehicles had been attempted to be burglarized a couple of years ago, and the thief had reached through the old gate and tampered with the motor box. So she was trying to prevent that by putting on the backing. That backing made the gate to be opaque, and that's where she ran into trouble, because the ordinance says that fences have to have at least no more than 50% opacity. And the issue we have legally with the ordinance is that it just talks about fences, it doesn't talk about gates, and the word fence is actually defined in the ordinance, and it's not defined to include the word gate. So we don't believe that the ordinance clearly regulates the conduct at issue here, and even if it did, if you were to include gates within the definition of fences, she's got hundreds and thousands of feet of fence that have no problem with the opacity regulations. So if you consider them together, she still meets the definitions, or at least it's unclear enough that we feel like it would be fair and equitable to allow her to keep her $9,000 gate, which is protecting her from burglary. We testified at the last hearing about the safety of this gate, how it opens inward towards the property very, very slowly. There's a full line of sight. There's no safety issue whatsoever, and it just happens to be that we're stuck in this unfortunate, uncomfortable dispute with a gentleman that just does not wanna let us have any peace. So we would humbly ask, we don't think we need a variance because of the issues outlined legally with the ordinance, but in order to put this to bed and just be done with this, we're asking that the variance be granted.
Thank you. Does anybody else would like to speak? May I close the public hearing? Mr. Quigley?
David Quigley, Planning and Zoning Manager, just very quickly. The gentleman just said that there's only one objection. There was another objection that was submitted, and it's in your backup. It came in after the last council meeting.
I think the gentleman rescinded his original and...
That's correct. Moon of our.
And if I can make a comment, Quasai has been weighed for this item. It was also weighed for the last item, but Quasai's weighed for this item.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to ask. Is there any discussion by anyone? I was gonna start with Marlon, because it's your district.
I have some few issues with this. From what I understand...
Sorry?
From what I understand, the fence was out of compliance, and when they were called and said that they needed a permit, if it had been in compliance, they wouldn't have needed a permit. Am I correct or wrong on that? If staff could answer that for me?
Well, the fence, the fence was originally approved in 2016 as a three-and-a-half to four-foot fence, you know, and it was less than 50% opaque. At some point, I believe it was prior to the current owner, the fence was replaced by a six-foot-high kind of rail fence, mostly open. And, but she had asked the building, someone in the building department, whether replacing the gates with another gate required a permit, and the answer was no. But the problem was when the gate was replaced, it was replaced within a completely opaque surface, which violates the rural lifestyle regulations.
So the problem is the opaqueness as well as the height?
They're both at issue, and they're both part of the variance request. And I'm sorry, it's somewhat of a complex history, but yes, they're both at issue.
I see that the opaqueness is...
No, no. I closed the... Was that a question to the petitioner or to the...
Well, she keeps acting like that's wrong, what I had just said, that so...
Actually, if I could interject, if I'm not mistaken, I asked for that letter that they got, and in the letter, it actually says that they don't need a permit if they're replacing the original fence, the gate or fence, which they weren't, they didn't do.
Which is not the original.
Right. So, you know, that is, that's part of the issue, too. But, I mean, I had said at the last meeting, you know, if we made the mistake, then, you know, that was our problem. But there wasn't a mistake. It was very clear in the letter that the way I interpreted it, that you, it was no permit needed if you were going to repair what was damaged in the old fence, and I believe a number was given in the, what do you call it, in the letter. So, am I correct, Mr. Weinfall?
You're correct. You reiterated the email that was provided. They cited to a permit number, which is a 2016 permit number.
Okay, thank you. Susan, you want to say something?
I was out in the neighborhood, because I thought it would be a good idea to drive by and actually see myself, as we often do. And, you know, I have to tell you, I really didn't see it as a disadvantage. I mean, I know that it's an after-the-fact issue here, and if there was a misunderstanding from a previous owner, or there was a misunderstanding, again, going forward on whether it was or was not supposed to be, I don't know, maybe somehow I think we should try to be a little clearer what I saw in our code on what could or could not be going forward. I kinda liked it. I'll be honest with you. The aesthetics of this is, I think, beautiful for the community there. It looks very nice. I mean, most of the community is out. We have beautiful fencing, and there, I've driven around Davie a few more places and out to see that there are some fences throughout the town that are like that. I just, I don't think it's right to isolate, at this time, one person to, you know, say no now, when, you know, there may be other folks throughout the town that have been allowed and permitted to do this. As a personal preference, I just think it, you know, I mean, when all things give an equal, code, letter, neighbors, this and that, it just seems like you balance it out and you try to do what is fair. And at this point, I just think it's fair to allow it to stay. I think sometimes fences make good neighbors, because maybe it is better that this neighborhood and this neighbor might have a higher fence and more opaque, I mean, more privacy. The house next door, you know, I mean, I could see the house next door, there's a lot of shrubberies, and then there's a big Winnebago sitting right out there. So, I mean, if somebody's gonna complain about things that are nice-looking versus something that, you know, you have to see every day as a nicer, I mean, you're gonna start weighing things over and over again, and that seems to be what we shouldn't let them do. I think that's not fair to anyone. So, the fencing and the hedge being a little higher kind of gives that privacy that I think is probably needed or wanted, and I think it looks very nice out there. She's invested a lot of money into the property. You can clearly see that, too, and I think it looks very nice, and to be fair, I would probably support this.
In reference to your comment, yes, there are several other gates like that, and many of them are in the process of going through code compliance, and it's always been our desire to have a community that's open, and sometimes these opaque fences and gates make it very difficult for law enforcement, you know, to see what's going on. And if this, if this is approved, I would imagine that we would have dozens of applications coming in for this type of gate and fence, and I don't think that that is what we intended when we did the code many years ago. And I think it's, it's a shame, and we can't say, well, we gotta approve it because she spent so much money. I think I had asked the question of staff. If you buy a property that has an issue, you actually buy that issue. Is that...
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. If you buy a property that has unpermitted work, you inherit the unpermitted work.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, you know, I do feel bad, but because of the way that this could continue on through, you know, make a precedent, and based on the fact that my reason for tabling was based on that letter of approval, which I have read carefully, and the fact that another one of the neighbors rescinded his approval, so I'm gonna have a very difficult time approving this.
Mayor, one more thing?
Just wait a minute. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So, it's the, so it's the height and the cover that's on it, correct?
That's correct.
So if we had, if they had went back to the same exact fence that they had, we wouldn't have this discussion?
Correct.
Right?
Well, the height, the height would have been a code compliance issue anyway, because, you know, that was clearly done without benefit of a permit. Again, the 2016 original permit showed a three-and-a-half to four-foot-high fence.
So if they had went back to the three-to-four foot, we wouldn't be having this discussion?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Okay. Mike Cooper, please.
I know that we always think that, I guess, some of our codes stand the test of time sometimes, but I think this is something that I'd like to see addressed going forward, because there's some beautiful homes out there that would like to be able to have a nicer fencing and a nicer gate, and I don't see anything wrong with that going forward. I think that when we originally looked at this as a rural lifestyle initiative, 20 years ago, maybe, is that what it was? Pretty much?
2002.
2002, yeah, good 20-some-odd years ago. We didn't know then what we know now, and Davie has evolved. I think, you know, we talk about, sometimes you mentioned it at last couple meetings, on some of the decisions that you voted on, that how we have to adapt with time. So I kinda think this is one of those moments where I think, you know, we might wanna look at it and address it going forward, if there's others that are out there that are interested and desirous. I mean, we seem to be taking one step forward and two steps back sometimes, so I'd like to see us, you know, look at revisiting that as a whole, anyway.
Thank you. Marla?
If I could ask a quick question there. If I vote yes on this, am I setting a precedence for all out there, or is every variance stand on its own feet?
Every variance stands on its own feet. That's correct.
Mr. Ra...
I'd like the neighborhood there. And it's very attractive, and Councilmember Starkey is correct that there are a lot of, I can think of quite a few homes that have some gates that are probably out of code, but they are gorgeous, that they do look well. If this was the fence, I would have trouble with it, but with it just being the gate, I'm having a hard time with this whole thing, period. I don't like it that it's two things out of code, with the height and this, but it does not look bad. Honestly, I can't say that it really, you know, looks bad, or it's gonna set this horrible precedent, it's gonna ruin the neighborhood or the town. That I can't say, because I think it's a great neighborhood. I think it, so I'm probably gonna support it, but I'm holding my nose when I vote for this. I don't like this.
And, you know, I've always said, if you have a question, if you have to hold your nose, then you're not following your, you know, you just, you have to make a decision that you're comfortable with.
I know, but I have to put myself in the feet of the residents.
Not necessarily. You're upholding the code and looking at the entire community.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If I think, I can just sit here in my head and think around West Davie, how many people I know that have a gate that's out of code that's big, but it's generally on a gorgeous home, on more than one acre, and I don't think, I don't think it's wrong to say you can have this. Now, if the whole fence was two or three feet higher and opaque, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I wouldn't, there wouldn't be a thought in my mind where I'm having this cognitive problem. I wouldn't, there wouldn't be a thought in my mind where I'm having this cognitive dissonance sitting up here, because I am, I'm not comfortable with this whole thing. But I, I do, I, I don't see a harm if I say yes. That's, that's the issue that I'm, that I'm having a problem with. If I say, if I say yes, I don't necessarily think I'm causing harm to, to anyone out there. That, that's, that's my issue, I guess.
Mr. Quigley, your question, do you have, do you know offhand if there's any other, um, variances or applications coming in for gates of this nature?
No actual applications, other than the correspondence that was in, in your packet about another one on the street, potentially.
Okay.
I have a question. So if we were to vote yes on this, to allow it to go through, what is to say the neighbor next door decides to come in with a higher fence and a different color in the back? Are we going to say okay for that, too? Why have the codes?
Thank you.
Well, I, I think, I think we were, it was just the point that everyone stands on its own feet.
Yeah, but it's a little hard if it's the same street. Because you, you find that. You know, everybody says, well, my neighbor had it, why, why can't I have it? And that's, you know, the general feeling every time that something comes up in, in a variance, or, you know, somebody wants to know, well, if my neighbor has it, why can't I have it? And it doesn't matter that he got it 30 years ago when the code was different, I, I want it now myself, so.
I, I don't disagree. I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time with this, I really am. I, I, I don't know that saying no really hurts the neighborhood or, or, or West Davie. I, I think it's, this is one of those anomalies. The fence is a little bigger, it's, it's opaque, but it's a good-looking fence in a good-looking neighborhood, and I can't see where it's causing harm to, to anyone. Am I happy about this? No, I'm not.
Oh.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the variance, uh, number 17.
Fails for lack of a second?
Yeah, I'll make a second.
Rojo?
Councilmember Whitman?
No.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And, um, if we can, perhaps, David, put that on one of your lists of what we can do to look at this going forward on another...
We might as well just scrap the whole...
No, don't say it. Don't say it. Don't say it.
I, I like it on the fences, on the gates, I, I think that that's sorta like a front door, so everybody wants to be a little different on their front door. I, I think the gates, we, we may have to change some things on that, it's my feeling.
Okay. Moving on, I think that's everything except the ALF, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Should be another marathon now. Okay, what we have is, and we're gonna discuss them all together, but we're going, and, and I'll take them in order and vote on each one separately after we finish discussion. We're gonna be doing Site Plan Number Eight, Flex Units Number Nine, the Platte Number Ten, fourteen, the Land Use Amendment, which requires a supermajority, the rezoning, which requires a supermajority, variance V22-162, variance, uh, that was nineteen, excuse me, variance eighteen, V22-174, variance twenty-four oh five eight, and variance twenty-five oh three six. Mr. Weinfall, would you like to read all of those, or do you wanna do?
I, I think we should discuss first, and then I could read prior to each vote.
Oh, okay.
But it's your prerogative, Mayor.
I'd like to hear you read. And you don't have to repeat them, just, just...
All right, I'll do that, Mayor.
Read all of the titles on...
Yes, Mayor. So number eight, Site Plan SP22-145, 5000 Davie LLC. Number nine, Flex Application, A Resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, Approving Flex Application FX25-031, 5000 Davie LLC, For the Allocation of Residential Flexibility in accordance with the Broward County Land Use Plan, Providing for Setability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date. Platte, A Resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, Approving a Platte known as 5000 Davie, Authorizing the Mayor and Town Clerk to Acknowledge Your Approval by Affixing the Mayor's Signature and the Town's Seal to Said Platte, Providing for Setability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date. Number fourteen, Land Use Plan, In Orange of the Town of Davie, Florida, Approving the Land Use Plan Amendment, Application LA22-141, 5000 Davie LLC, Amending the Town of Davie Comprehensive Plan by Changing the Future Land Use Plan Map Designation of Certain Lands from Commercial Residential One Dwelling per acre to Residential Twenty-Two Dwellings per acre, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Setability, and Providing for an Effective Date, Does Require Supermajority. Number fifteen, In Orange of the Town of Davie, Florida, Approving Zoning Application ZB22-142, 5000 Davie LLC, Changing the Zone Designation of Certain Lands Within the Town of Davie from Community Business B2 District and Agricultural A1 District to Community Facility CF District, Amending the Town Zoning Map to Comply therewith, Providing for Setability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date, Does Require Supermajority. Number eighteen, Variants, A Resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, Taking Final Action on Variance Application V22-162, Providing for Setability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date, Does Require Supermajority. Number nineteen, A Resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, Taking Final Action on Variance Application V22-174, Providing for Setability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date. Number twenty, Variants, A Resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, Taking Final Action on Variance Application V24-058, Providing for Setability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date. Number twenty-one, Variants, A Resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, Taking Final Action on Variance Application V25-036, Providing for Setability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date, and Quasi-ways for All Items, Mayor.
Thank you. Okey-dokey, since this includes public hearings, we're gonna allow the applicant to come up and make a presentation, and then we'll have a staff report.
Madam Mayor, good evening. Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Manny Snolofsky. My office address is 6540 East Tropical Way Plantation, Florida. Excited to be here, and I will be brief because we have a lot of items, and I'm sure that as we go through these, there'll be questions. First, what I'd like to do is to put the presentation in context, because you would think that nobody in their right mind would submit an application for a project that would require nine actions from a council. But I think it's important for you to understand that of these nine actions that we're asking for, six of the nine are specifically related to an ALF.
That's pretty.
There is no ALF that could come to the town and not require the first six, and I'll explain to you why. And then the remaining three are, as a result of our unique site. We currently are zoned predominantly a commercial zoning District B2. We have a portion of the site that, in effect, is to the far east, that we're not developing any building on, that, in effect, has an agricultural zoning. But the bulk of the site, and specifically where we're putting the ALF today, is zoned commercial. And there's a significant list of uses that we could easily put on that portion of the site, many of which you may like and some you may not like. And we can go through that list if you want, but we opted not to do that. Why did we opt to move away from commercial? And by the way, our neighbors to the north have commercial zoning, our neighbor to the south have commercial zoning, our neighbors across the way to the west have a higher-density residential zoning. Many reasons why we're here, specifically speaking to you about an assisted living facility. And what I wanna share with you is that this is a unique assisted living facility because 100% of the units require, in effect, support for the residents. It's not unusual today to receive an application for an ALF that has independent living, X-number of units, then assisted living, which require the residents to have some type of assistance in their la, daily life. And for that matter, um, after assisted living, there's memory care. We have no independent living. This is not intended to be, if you will, a community for active residents. This is a community 100% of which is going to support residents that need, in effect, assistance with their daily life. And I think it's important for you to, for you to know that. You've seen other ALFs come here, you've considered them, many of them, and I would say, most of them, if not all of them, had a very significant amount of independent living, which candidly becomes a attractive lifestyle, maybe for retirees or for older Americans, 'cause that's the definition of, of the residents. But 100% of our residents are, in effect, in need of assistance, whether it's memory care or whether it's assisted living. In addition to that, our ALF is actually requiring 82 units of assignment from your flex pool of units, so that we could develop 164 beds. To a certain degree, it's two-for-one, and that's the way the code is written here in the town, and that's the way it's written in the county. We're able to bring twice as many, if you will, individual residents because of the fact that it is a special residential facility category three, which means that, in effect, the residents are receiving support. It's important for you to know that we are exactly, and one of the reasons that we picked this site before, before any other site in Davie, and we were looking for Davie for specific reasons, and we'll speak to you about that, this is the only site that is exactly 2.5 miles south of the new hospital on University and 2.5 miles north of Memorial And candidly, because of the residents that we're going to be serving, and we don't expect to be needing to attend hospital services at any time, the fact that we're exactly 2.5 miles from either direction gives a lot of comfort to not only the residents, but the family of the residents that would bring their families to reside here. The other thing that I wanna share with you is, in a study that was done literally by the area agency, and it's referred to as the PRG Survey of Older Americans in Broward County, there are only, in Broward County, 9,653 beds, only 9,653 beds for anybody that needs an assisted living facility. And in a similar study done by Broward County, referred to as the 2024 Profile of Older Florida that includes specifically Broward County, there are 360,000 residents in Broward County that, in effect, would meet the requirements to dwell at the ALF. Quick math, today in Broward County, there is 2.7% of the number of beds, 2.7% of the number of beds that could possibly be available to older Americans, as defined, if you will, by the county and other agencies. One last little fact before we get into the presentation. Today, today, the Broward County population of older Americans is at 18% of the total population of Broward County. In less than 15 years, in 2040, by a number of studies made by many others, that population will grow to 25%. Within the next 15 years, we are going to have a quarter of our population within the, if you will, definition of an older American. So with that, I'm going to start our presentation, and again, hopefully I can handle this technology. The white one does it? Okay, great. Not to be repetitive, these are the various actions that you are listening to tonight. And as we go through each one of them, I will tell you the ones that are specific to the CF use, which per the, I'm gonna say, methodology or direction of the Planning and Zoning Department is what we would need to rezone the current commercial zoning of B2 for the purpose of a ALF. The property is located on Davie Road, literally on the east side of Davie Road. It's an L-shaped parcel. We are south of Griffin Road and north of Sterling. Across the street from us, and you see it in the, in the red, if you will, definition of the property, across the street from us to the west is a townhouse community. North of us is a commercial office building. And for that matter, to the south of us, there are a number of parcels that, in effect, are all zoned commercial. The far west end of our property, almost aligned with the residential parcel to the north, on the east side, I'm sorry, is that portion of the total acreage that is agricultural. The rest of the property is a commercial district, it's B2. Interesting to note that there is a significant water body north of us, significant water body north of us, and that there is also a significant water body, smaller nonetheless, immediately south of us. And between those two water bodies, you'll see in the future images, is where we intend to develop an acre lake within our property. This just further defines what I was mentioning to you. If you look towards the center of the image, you'll see that we are zoned B2. There's a B2 with a box around it over the footprint of our ALF, and then you can see that half of our lake is B2, and the other half of our lake is within the A1. What I can assure you is that we have no building being proposed that, in effect, would impact any existing residential building, either to the north or to the south of us, hence why we put the lake as far east as we did. And across the street from us, there's an RM10 residential designation to the west. I'm not gonna highlight them, but we've identified a handful of other ALFs that exist in the community. And what's actually interesting, and again, one of the reasons that we chose Davie, is because historically Davie has been wonderful, two facilities that support the older Americans within the town community. This is the proposed site plan. There's a lot of information here, but suffice it to say that the building itself is what you see in yellow, and it is basically, let's say, shaped in the form of an L. In the center of that L, there is a pool. That pool is specifically designed for accessibility and to provide therapeutic programs for all the residents of the ALF. The lake that you see in the far east has been reviewed by the Central Broward Water Control District. For that matter, I can tell you that they've approved all of the drainage plans for that lake. And the only reason that we do not have a permit from Central Broward is because we have to record easements, which we would do after the site plan gets approved. That lake represents literally a full acre of the 3.81 acres. Let's think a little bit about the variances, because four of the actions that you are reviewing today are variances. And what I want to tell you that of the four variances, three of them are variances because specifically they're required by the proposed rezoning to CF. If we were to develop commercial developments on the property, they would not be applicable. And I'll give you an example. CF requires a 50-foot front setback. Nonetheless, commercial development only requires 25. We are providing the 25. Unfortunately, we can't reach the 50. But what I want to share with you is a very quick note from your actual code as to what a CF facility is and why you would want 50 feet in a CF facility and why I believe that it may not be necessary for the proposed ALF. Ornet's 2012-028 increase the minimum lot size from one acre to five acres. That's one of the variances that we're asking for. We don't meet the five acre. Okay? But I'm going to keep reading. As part of a larger effort to address zoning and development standards for schools, places of public assembly, such as churches and meeting halls and so on, and other community facility uses, I would dare say that an ALF is really not any of the above. Nonetheless, it falls within the CF required rezoning that we have to do. Hence, that is the first variance that we're asking you for. We do not have the five acres. We understand nonetheless that if we would have been a school, we would have been a house of worship, we would have been a community facility, meaning open to the public, where anybody and everybody could attend, we would see why we would need five acres. The ALF, in effect, is not any of those. And in particular, the increase from one to five, because I read in a lot of detail the backup for the Ornet's of 2012, was primarily due to parking. If there's anything that we do not need is parking. And your code and other sections reflect that there is a diminished need for parking for assisted living facilities, particularly assisted living facilities where all the residents require assistance with their daily living. Again, we have no independent living unit within our ALF. The second variance that's tied to the CF, believe it or not, has to do with the height of the building. CF requires buildings not to exceed 35 feet. And I just want to be very clear what we're doing and what we're not doing. We tried desperately to meet the 35 feet. We had an earlier solution that would have met the 35 feet. The reality is, ALFs really require a significant amount, and when I say ALFs, ALFs, the 2025 version, which hopefully will be still very attractive 40 years from now, require a significant amount of height between floors so that systems related to primarily conditioning, air exchanges, removing air, bringing outside air, it's critical that we have those heights so that we can fit that equipment. We, in effect, are not at 35 feet. We're at 37 feet, two inches. Now, the reality is, you're going to see on the variance that we've asked for a variance because we have heights as tall as 49 feet, I think 49 six. But the reality is that your code allows you to add height to your building if you're adding architectural features specifically intended to block rooftop equipment and to block, in effect, rooftop systems that obviously nobody wants to see. Plus, it helps us create an attractive roof line, particularly the one that fronts Davie Road. So that's the second variance. The third variance has to do with landscaping. I told you that we went to the drainage district and that we're, in effect, short of getting a permit. And we will get that the moment we record our easements to the district. But the bottom line is, in order to satisfy the drainage requirements, and I have to be candid with you, we are taking on water in a site that today takes on water. That's the reality. We're responsible for that water. Like you may have heard before, you buy the property, you buy it all. Well, there's quite a bit of water that gets, if you will, drain into the property, even though it's not supposed to happen. We've calculated that amount of water, plus we've calculated the amount of water that we're going to create when it rains from impervious area. And hence, we're providing an acre of the property specifically for the purpose of the lake and the drainage. Now, the truth is, of the variance for landscaping that, in effect, requires a 10-foot buffer along the perimeter, believe it or not, that is a requirement of the CF zoning district. If we were a commercial district, probably not. That being said, what I want to share with you is where you see the green and where you see the light blue in the image that's in front of you, literally to the east side of our property, there's, in effect, 53 feet of 165 feet, only 53 feet of real water. Everything else is a combination of buffer, sod, slope, and what we call littoral plantings. And that is one of the reasons that we're here, because in order to satisfy the drainage district, we couldn't quite give the district, I'm sorry, give the town the 10 feet, we reduced it to eight. Nonetheless, I can tell you that of 165 feet, there's literally 112 feet worth of landscaping on that lake area. The other area that reduces the landscaping, and it only happens in two locations, on the far bottom of the image that you're looking at, where you see a number three and a number three, we have two accessible parking spaces that by virtue of being wider, because accessible spaces are not 10 feet, they're 12, and by virtue of having an accessible aisle so that somebody that's physically challenged can get to those spaces, only the two corners of those two parking spaces infringe on the 10-foot buffer. They infringe to the point as much as 4.5 feet, hence the difference of 5.6 feet. But the reality is, it's not like we aren't meeting the landscape requirement, quite the opposite. Your staff and their report has told you and has told us that not only do we comply, but we exceed the landscape requirements with our proposed landscape. So that, in effect, was the discussion on all the variances. This shows you the ground floor footprint. And what I want to share with you is that, as you look at this image, the pool and pretty much everything that surrounds a pool to the left of the pool and to the bottom of the pool, meaning to the west and to the south, all of that is program space. Those are all spaces that our residents are going to enjoy day in and day out for things like meals, for things like meeting rooms, for things like card rooms, for things like movie rooms, and so on and so forth. That occurs all on the ground floor, and obviously, the therapeutic pool is part of that. There's a significant amount of outdoor covered, what we call lanai area, because we want the residents to be able to enjoy the outside. And I would say that eight of the 12 months of the year, they will spend significant time in that courtyard. On the second and third floor, it's basically all residential units. And I don't want you to think that when we say, well, it's two to one, we're putting two beds in every room. That isn't the case. Every single resident at this proposed ALF will have their room. Hence, we have 164, and we may refer to them as units, but in effect, they're all single private rooms. Some are a little smaller, some are a little bigger, but in effect, nobody is doubling up in any one of these rooms. Something that I want to share with you that is part of our building code, part of the state code, part of ACA requirements, is that we will have fuel and standby power generation for a total of 72 hours in the event that we lose power at any time. And contractually, we have, in effect, a contractor that will be supplying that fuel continuously, hence the 72 hours in the event that they get delayed after some kind of event that causes a delay. This gives you a little bit of an idea of the building elevations and the movement of the roof. And I actually have a material board. I won't go through the detail of it, but I believe that if you want to see it, I'm happy to pass it on to you, but you'll be pretty excited to see the selection of materials that we're looking to provide. Now comes the commitment that we made. Thank you so much, ma'am. The commitment that we made to your staff and to the P&amp;Z board, where originally we had submitted a design that had three stories fronting Davie Road. And after listening to commentary from staff and from the community, we purposely redesigned the building so the front of the building facing Davie Road is only going to be two-story. So the variance, if we wanted to say that, you know, that that variance from 35 to 37, too, would be required, believe it or not, isn't necessary for the frontage of the building facing Davie Road. The frontage of the building is actually, if I include the parapet, is less than 30 feet, which is very, very compatible with two-story buildings throughout the community. When we lost the third floor fronting Davie Road, and we were very concerned because 164 beds is a critical number, and I have to be candid with you, it's not critical because we're looking at the bottom line and looking at the pro forma. There are significant state requirements for staffing. And the reality is, for the community to work, there's a certain mass that by virtue of the staff requirements, you know, X amount of folks for the director who has to have certain credentials, X amount of folks for the nurse that has to have certain credentials, X amount of folks, 164 is a critical number. You'll rarely see a 2025 ALF that has less than 164 beds. So what we did is, we removed medical space that wasn't required by the ALF. It was an add that we wanted to provide to the residents. We removed that use from the ground floor and we added the beds, if you will, that we lost that were on the third floor. It doesn't change a footprint whatsoever. It doesn't change a parking requirement whatsoever. It doesn't change the height of the building in the rear. It takes advantage of the reduction of the height of the building facing Davie Road. And what we have here is a terrace that overlooks, if you will, Davie Road, that pushes the third floor another 25 feet back. And it wasn't magical. We were trying to get to the 50 feet so that we could tell you that at least the third floor is at least 50 feet from the property line, where we know that the first and second floor are not. And that's what you see here in this image. This is the imagery of the ALF that we want you to approve tonight. Again, two stories facing Davie Road, three stories pushed back. You can see the mix of materials, whether it's siding, whether it's brick, whether it's stone, you can see the combination of colors. You can see the towers to give character to the building and to identify the anchoring of the ALF within the right-of-way. And you can see that, in effect, the buffer that exists at 25 feet is pretty ample. And I can assure you, it won't be any different if we developed commercial uses on this property. The landscape plan is extraordinary, and I say that because there's a certain legacy on this site. The site used to be a nursery. I'm going to say thousands of families have benefited throughout the year of the materials that were grown at that nursery. So we were very committed not only to meet the landscaping requirements, but to exceed them. And you can see, when you give up an acre towards the water body, there's quite a bit of density of landscape material throughout the remainder of the site. I'm not going to get into the detail of the planting material, whether they're trees or shrubs or ground covers, but you would be proud and excited about the quality of the material that we've selected. Material that, in effect, is local, material that is vernacular, material that is hurricane-proof, material that invites, let's say, squirrels and butterflies and all kinds of...
Pollinators.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. For a moment, I blinked, but you're right. But I want to show you that section that you see on the bottom, because that gives you an indication of literally the buffer that we are providing, that we plant trees on by the lake, and then we begin planting after a certain amount of area, and then we actually plant into the water what's called a littoral, not pronouncing it right either, L-I-T-O-R-A-L, shelf, that has amazing material that's really intended to create a wetland community of plantings within the water. This just gives you an idea of how we're carefully shading even the drives throughout the community to make sure that we're minimizing the impact of any driveway within the community. This confirms that we have zero foot candles in terms of affecting our neighbors with overspill or, for that matter, with glare, no matter what direction. If you look carefully at these photometrics, you'll see that basically we are at zero at the property line. We've worked carefully with fire rescue, and it's hard to see. We highlighted it, and then it looks a little bit too dark, so we took the highlight off. But we have a very simple way of getting in and getting out. The driveway to the south, in effect, is exit-only. The driveway to the north, in effect, is two-way. Okay? Hence, I tell you that, you know, we can go south to Pembroke Memorial, or we can go north to HCA from this location. And with that, this is our final image. I thank you very much, and I'm happy to speak to you about any questions that you have. And in particular, we didn't get into the flex application, but that's a requirement for the 82 units that become 164 beds. We didn't speak about the plat, which, by the way, we've already applied to the county for the plat, and the only comment that they had, in effect, was that we dedicate an amount of area for an expanded sidewalk and a bus shelter, which we have in the plans that we submitted to you. And we also shared the lupa with the Broward County Planning Council, the Land Use Plan Amendment, and all they're waiting for, candidly, is for our, I shouldn't say our, for your approval of the flex units so that they can move forward and the project can move forward, if you will, at the county level. With that, I'll keep quiet and answer any questions that you or the public may have. Thank you.
I have a question.
What?
I have a question, ma'am.
I have a question, ma'am. Again, plus, it's your district, so I thought you could start.
I've got a question. You said there was 164 beds?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that means you're sharing a room with somebody?
No.
Not in the family or somebody?
No, ma'am. The, for the purpose of density, both in the town and in the county, special residential facilities, which an ALF has considered that, as opposed to counting every, I'm going to call it "family" because they're individual folks, as one unit, they're counted as half a unit. So in order to get 164 beds, we're requesting 82 flex units. But what I assured you, and I will reiterate now, is that there is no sharing, that there are exactly 164 rooms, each one with a single bed. Some of the rooms have a living area, some of them have a smaller living area, but no, there is no bunking, if you will, at the proposed ALF.
Okay.
And before I forget, Madam Councilmember, one of the conditions of approval, which we agreed to, because you had raised a question earlier when we met, all of the perimeter wall, we had a combination of four and eight-foot walls, all of them are being proposed as eight feet. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Manny. One of my concerns, and it had been addressed, was the medical facility that seemed to be on the first floor, and I was happy to hear that that had been removed because I, in my wildest imagination, couldn't and shouldn't think of what could have been to do that for.
Yeah.
Whether it was just a removal of a mole, or whether it was full-on operation, which concerned me, so...
That's been removed.
I'm glad that that happened, and I'm also glad to see that the second story on Davie Road was also placed there. I examined that project site plan. I still have it at house. I should bring it back to the office, but a lot of work went into this, and I could see that there was a lot of effort between you and staff throughout, and I appreciate all the efforts that everybody has made in getting this to move forward. Clearly is something that's needed within the town of Davie and in the county itself.
Yes, ma'am.
And it looks like it would be a benefit. Those were my biggest concerns, because I saw that many of the comments that had been made previously had been addressed, whether they be by staff or whether they were from planning and zoning. So once again, I thank you.
And thank you very much for reminding me that I do have to thank the town staff, because it's been a journey, and they've been very much by my side. They may say that I'm not easy, but nonetheless, I really respect and thank them, every department and every department that, and any department that we met with, because we had many meetings with, I would say, every department.
Every department, I know. Engineering, everybody. Thank you all very much.
Yeah. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you.
I just have one quick question. If, would the owner be willing to do a deed restriction to up into CO to make sure that this is built, that it's an ALF?
Councilmember, we have had that conversation before with staff and with your P&amp;Z board, and for a number of reasons, the owner has told us that he does not and will not place a restriction. Nonetheless, I want to share with you that hopefully, we are going to get approved tonight, and then there's a second reading, to dismantle all of these approvals that involve not only the town, but involves a plat at the county, and it involves Drainage District, and involves the Planning Council. And it's a journey that we've been on, whatever, for whatever reason, a five-year journey to get to where we are today. There is really no intent from the owner to do anything other than what he's proposing. The owner is here. I'm happy to introduce him, and if he has any other...
You understand my fear.
Yes. Yeah, but I think, again, this is a little bit different than other ALFs that may, in effect, have been reviewed and approved with independent living units. Independent living unit is very close to being, candidly, multifamily, all right? This is not what we're doing here. Our owner has been in the business of serving older Americans for many, many years. That is his business. That is his personal business, highly regarded, highly recognized. By the way, he's a resident of the town, has his home here in the town of Davie. And, you know, I understand the question, but I've been told to clearly state that he has no intention to do any other development on this site other than this, and we're hoping that with an approval after a second hearing, we can quickly move through what's left at the county and the other agencies and literally be out of the ground, because we know, number one, that the market is immense. We also know that the demand is extraordinary, and by virtue, and I think it's fair to say this, by virtue of this being 100% assisted living or memory care, there are components of other ALFs that have, for instance, performing theaters, and they have not one dining hall, they have multiple dining halls, and they have not one pool, but three pools. Those become very difficult in a moment where the development economy is, if you will, maybe uncertain. This is very different. This is really intended to be very focused and very in line with a full 100% assisted living community.
Okay. I'm going to add on to that, because I had originally asked for that deed restriction as well. And I just need to ask you a question and put it on the record.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it true that this property has been put up for sale?
The answer is yes, Madam Mayor, but let me clarify or maybe qualify that. And this is the way that it was explained to me, so I'm going to share it with you. Anticipating that we're going to get approval, one of the ways to develop or to define better what the value of the land is, better than anything else, is to show a lender an offer from a third party. And my understanding is that that was really the intent, not because there's an idea of selling this to anybody, certainly not a church, certainly not a school, certainly not a operation that really is going to be a community facility. That is really not what we're intending to do, but you're correct.
That kind of disturbed me.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we've seen this happen before, where we've approved something, and then they put it up for sale, and then it never gets billed, or five years down the road, or six days down the road, and they come in and do something. So, you know, I just, that was very concerning to me. And I think doing a deed restriction would have made that, made it more comfortable to live with that, because we certainly, once it's a CF, it's open to being a school or a church or, you know, whatever else. Is this the owner?
Yes, let me introduce Jean Kisselman, because I spoke of him, but he would like to...
Okay.
Is it okay, Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jean Kisselman, and I've been on that journey for a very long time. Just to be clarified, it was put up, it's been on the market for, oh, five years, I think, for four years or better, if you look at it, just to establish the value. The problem is, was putting any deed restriction, and I've said that before, and I went back to the lender, and they looked at it. They said that most of the companies that do lending are very regulated, and that includes also companies that usually, at the end of a day, buy big ALFs, like Sunrisers of the World, for lack of a better word, the big company that operates. They cannot have, they're all Wall Street bonded, and Wall Street, and one of their ordinances in their documents, there cannot be any restriction on the deed. So any restrictions, it would make it impossible to, I could explain until I'm blue in the face, that it's a restriction only to build this, this, but if it says in their documents, in the bank's documents, that it cannot be any restrictions on the deed, there is nothing that I can do to finance this thing, nothing that I can do to eventually convert it to somebody who can operate it, I guess, better and more efficiently, just by virtue of knowing and being around a lot more. So having any restriction, and Manny could testify to that, that once he said, once he said originally the restriction, said, okay, no problem with the restriction. And then, where I went back to the lenders, and I went back to the operators, and they said, any restrictions, if the restriction says that the sun has to be blue, or the sun has to be shining, or it has to be round, any restriction would make any transaction null and void and impossible to carry. And that's the only reason that I'm standing here today, saying that I, not that I don't want to have a restriction, because I don't have a problem.
Is it your intention to actually build this facility, or are you going to sell it and have someone else build it?
I have, I will have, I will have, I'll need the banks, bank on the property to build it. It's a pretty big project, but eventually, probably once it's built, most of them get sold to the Sunrisers of the World. I mean, when I say Sunrisers, I mean the big operator, Crystal or whoever operates. I mean, Crystal operates, I think, two facility right in Palm, and this is the only business they have, and this is the only business I know. So I, I mean, while I can't, I can't see into the future, and I'd love, I'd love that ability, so I can say that, and it is my full intention to build a facility and create a greater demand, to meet the demand that exists right now, to create. I operated so far adult daycares, one, three of the biggest ones in New York, and that is like what would be a natural succession, from adult daycare into ALF, and from ALF into the home care, or whatever the people are moving in.
Thank you.
Yes, I do.
Along that line, I guess, something like a reversion, if it doesn't go forward with the permit at a certain time, to move forward with a building permit or any of the others, is there something, even if they don't make a performance on these certain timelines, perhaps?
Yeah, if I can remind you all, Madam Councilmember, the plat is going to have a restriction of 164 beds. Your site plan is designed based on 164 beds, and the parking is provided based on that number and on the staffing, and there are a lot of inherent, I'm going to say, limitations that are already within the approvals that we're asking for, that inevitably would cause somebody to come back here and have to, in effect, modify any of those approvals. I can't imagine how somebody would build anything other than this with the amount of, let's say, limitations that are already on the site plan, on the plat note, even the assignment of units from your flex bucket.
That goes back to another point, too, is that when you first came in with this, I had asked you to do something smaller, that I said you wouldn't have needed so many variances, and you should have done something smaller, but instead, you came in asking for flex units to make it bigger. And, you know, sometimes the flex units, using the flex units kind of helps you maneuver around and extra layer, you know, of approvals. And then the plat specifies the number of units, too, which I thought should have been smaller.
Yeah.
And you did, you know, I guess money was driving it, and that was the reason for needing more units, was, you know...
Yeah, if I can clarify, Madam Mayor, the request for flex units is a requirement no matter what, because what we're doing is, we're going to change the land use, which today is commercial, in the town, and for that matter, through the Planning Council, they'll accept that, to residential. So anybody that's going to, and I, and staff can correct me, but I believe that anybody that's going to develop an ALF in the town of Davie is required to ask for flex units. To your point, we're asking for 82, and maybe that number, in your opinion, is too high, but I don't want you to think that it's because we want to be bigger that we need flex units. I believe that we need flex units, no matter what the size of the ALF is.
Is that so?
David Quigley, planning and zoning manager. So that, right now, the land use is commercial, so there's no residential potential. In order to get residential units on the site, there's two ways. Because Broward County ultimately controls land use, you can change both the town's and the county's plan to residential, or you can use the county's flex policy, which is, the town has a pot of flex units that you have the discretion to allocate. So it's, the only difference is, if you don't approve the flex, the applicant would have to ask for the town comprehensive plan, but then also ask separately for a county amendment to add residential units. So it's not required in all cases, it's just, it's a particular, you know, discretionary decision.
But it doesn't specify the number. They pick the number, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I have my time. Am I hearing the fact that you want to guarantee, almost guarantee that this will be built?
That's what I'm looking for.
That's what I'm asking, that's what you're looking for, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, when I'm listening, is there any way it can be guaranteed that this will be built and not sold out underneath us?
Yeah.
I mean, that's... Sorry?
No, that's what they're saying, they're not going to do.
That's what I'm saying, there's no other way, there's no other way we can present that.
And they won't do a deed restriction.
There's no such thing, Mr. Yousen Thol, as a time-restricted deed restriction?
No.
I know, that sounds, you know, like for a certain time, it can expire.
The applicant doesn't want to do a deed restriction.
That's not what I asked, but that's okay. Sorry.
Okay. All right. And, you know, this is one of those things, Marlon, you talk about, you know, the question arises, and you just have a feeling, and, but I'd like to, you know, go back to the fact that originally, I looked at it, and I said it was too big. I wanted to see it smaller. Granted, they did the two stories, and they moved it back a little bit, but I wasn't When we vote on each one, I'll make comments on them, but I'm just really concerned. We've had too many issues, and you know, we've been going in that direction lately on a lot of our properties, asking for a deed restriction to make sure that whatever was going to be built, was built, and if not, it would revert back. You know, I don't mind if the property goes to CF, if it's going to be used the way it's intended to be, but it bothers me to, you know, have that question just kind of hanging over my head.
But that question has been asked and answered of the legal department, said if somebody wants to use it in any different way, in any different way than using, that you are approving it today, and I guess staff can correct me if I'm wrong, they'll need a new set of approvals. they'll need a new set of approvals. So whatever work we did so far for five years is totally flushed. So, none of the risks in real life, unless it's an ALF, exists, because if there is anything else, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if anything, if any, if, if anything else wants to be built, then actually that is approved right now on, on that plot plan, that has to go back in front of this committee, and nothing, nothing else.
Let me ask.
I think that should provide the comfort.
Councilmember Starkey wants to ask the attorney a question.
Yeah, Alan, is there some type of, other than that, some type of vested rights to the flex units into the density, which is, seems to be our biggest rub here?
Based upon the facts in front of me, no.
There wouldn't be?
No, councilman.
So, if this is scrapped, then, in other words, maybe banking doesn't go forward, or the economy goes bad, or whatever, and it actually does get sold, new owner comes in, there's not a vested right here, in your estimate, that they would be entitled to that type of density?
Uh, no, councilwoman, no.
Okay.
Wait, hold, I'm sorry, hold on.
Or the flex units, for that matter. Residential apartments, condos?
I, I don't know if the term vested right i- is the proper term. Once the zoning changes, they could build residential there, and the, the density is there, but I wouldn't use the term, you know, vested, vested right, but the density, the dens, yes. Once the zoning changes, the density is there, that's correct.
The flex units stay with that parcel, or will they go back into the pool if it's not used under this application?
They, they'll stay, they'll stay with the parcel. So, the flex units will stay with the parcel, but that no one will have, okay, it's simple, I'm sorry, the flex units will stay with the parcel, um, yes.
Can I ask something? Question.
Can I?
So.
She has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, Alan, so if, okay, if they don't do what they're telling us that they're going to do, and we make the decision to change the zoning, can we put somewhere where, if they don't conclude what they're doing, then it, the zoning can go back?
Uh, no, the, the zoning will change to CF.
Okay.
And then what is listed in CF in the code, if they, if they sell a property, that person could build, you know, CF is public assembly normally, so church, school, public assembly type structures, or ALF.
But, but we can't, instead of what, what y'all were saying with
The flex units.
The flex units, we can't, just with them, because each individual is, is, we do it on
That's for the variance, that's correct.
Right. So with the variance, we can't, if they don't do with what they're saying, then we can, we can't go back to, just for them.
So, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. So, if they don't build what they're saying, so, they have to, based upon everything in front of you, they have to build an ALF?
Mm-hmm.
But if they sell it, your question, if someone else buys it and they want to build something else, does everything that was approved, what happens? Is that, is that your question?
Correct.
Okay.
So, everything would go, could you go back to the zoning of what it is now, instead of?
No. So once the zoning is changed, the zoning gets changed, the flex units are with the property, I, I don't, I want, I'm sorry, are you confused with the term vested right? The flex, the flex units are going to the property, I wouldn't use the word vested right, but they're there. Now, the variances are, are for the ALF. If someone wants to build, let's say, a school, or a church, or another place of assembly, they may require additional variances that would come back before you.
But what I'm saying is the original of the zoning would not go back.
No, no.
What about the flex units?
Could I, could I clarify, David Quigley? Just one clarification, so, again, you have, you have a land use category, which is now commercial, and the proposed is, is residential, and you have zoning, and, you know, a development proposal has to align with both. So if, if the, if the land use is changed to residential, and the zoning is changed to CF, the, although we talked about schools and other things being allowed in CF, that would not be allowed on this parcel with the residential land use category. So, it is true that the, the CF zoning with the residential land use, the, the permitted uses under that scenario is basically assisted living facility. Now, does that mean somebody in the future can't request changes? No, it, it's always going to be a possibility. Just remember that the, the land use amendment is a legislative action, everything else is quasi judicial. So it's, it's, the land use is a policy decision, it's about the land use pattern of the town.
Let me just say one word, sir?
What?
The question is very simple, the concern that council has, that if tomorrow we sell the property to Lennai, just for, 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 for lack of a better word, can Lennai, can Lennai build 164 apartments there without going in front of this committee? That's the question.
The answer is no.
Okay. So, if somebody comes in tomorrow and decides, we want to use 84, 88, 82, 82, 82 flex units, unintendedly that you want to, you're giving them right now, they cannot do it without coming back to this committee and asking you for, 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 to, to, to approve it or disapprove it at your, at, at that time. That's, is that a correct statement? You got to help me out on that.
Can you repeat that last part?
I said that if somebody comes in tomorrow and say, we want to build 88, 164 apartments without going through this committee, will they have a right to that?
They have to go, they have to go to the council.
So without this council's approval, they can't do it. That's the, that's the question, that's the only question.
That's a correct statement, yes, it would have to go back to council.
All right.
Sorry, I, I
Going, going back a little bit, on the site plan, were there any P and Z recommendations and staff recommendations that?
Yes.
I know there are, I just want you to repeat them.
Yes, there's one, there's one staff recommendation, that's, it's technical things about utilities, and one, Planning and Zoning Board recommendation, which is the, the favoring the, the two stories along Davie Road, stepping up to three.
Okay. I'm just looking at the colors, that nobody on, P and Z's talked about the colors of the building?
Not that I recall, no.
Okay. I know they had a discussion about colors recently, so, I would just like to sit with you and talk about the colors.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. And, and again, even the day that we're painting the building, we do sample panels, and we would do that even that late, the colors was not an issue.
Yeah, because I, I couldn't tell whether, you know, it's a, a stone, or oil paint, or what, it's hard for me to see the
Yeah.
Sorry. One more thing, then I'm back. Actually, there is a software exists where, once the building is built, we would be able to make a picture of it and bring it over to mayor's office for, to, 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 to change it into 20 different colors, or 50, so you can pick the color, that, that the council can pick the colors. I'm not, I'm colorblind, so don't go by me.
Any other questions, comments? We're going to start. I'm going to ask you to entertain a motion for item 14, which is a land use plan amendment, which requires a super majority. Is there anybody that would like to make a motion? I'll make a motion for the land use plan amendment.
Motion to?
Approve.
Okay.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Motion passes.
Next, we're going to do the item on flex application, that's number nine, we have a motion. I'll make a motion to approve for the flex application. Roll call, please.
We need a second.
Oh, is there a second on that?
I'll give a second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Let's do number 15, the rezoning, this requires a super majority. I have a motion to rezone. I'll make a motion to approve with the rezoning.
I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I will do eight, the site plan. I'll make a motion to approve site plan.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Motion passes.
Item 10 is the plat. I have a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the plat. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Motion passes.
Item 19 is the variance, this requires a super majority, this is the one that allows on less than five acres.
Item 18 is the super majority, Mayor.
Oh, 18 is the super?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, 19.
Okay, I had them backwards.
Yeah.
So, we're doing 18?
19, 20, 21.
Yeah, 18 is a variance, and that's the one with the two-story building, that's, and the eight-foot wall, right?
That's for the parcel size.
Yeah, I, I had it backwards. Did I have a motion in a second? I'll make a motion for number 18 with the variance.
Motion to?
Approve. Is there a second?
Second it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 19, variance? I'll make a motion to approve, number 19, the variance.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Motion passes.
20, variance? I'll make a motion for number 20, variance to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And 21, the variance? I'll make a motion to approve number 21 variance.
Second it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I sure hope we get it.
It would be nice.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, thank you, council members, we truly appreciate it.
Let me just say two words, and then say that I promised I'm going to leave. Thank you, everybody, for, for, for supporting my vision for this for five years, and I will, I make you all proud, and especially you, Mayor, and hopefully
Well, when you have the ribbon cutting?
Yeah.
And we're there, and you're there, and the building is there, I will congratulate you and say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Okay, concludes the public portion of the meeting, and half the meeting, right? Did I forget anything?
Nope.
I don't think so. The different items we're reporting is the proclamations, or International Overdose Awareness Day, and National Payroll Week. Yay, finance. Any board or committee appointments? Seeing none? Okay. We've got all these dates to look at. Our first budget hearing is September 3rd, along with the council meeting, and I'm sure the CRA meeting. Comments, I'm going to start. I met this past week at Gandhi Square to read a proclamation and support India's Independence Day. It was a very nice, nice event, always is. I am very honored to have received an award, the Sawgrass Awards, from the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce, which is hosted by the Greater West Broward Business Council. And as I said in my acceptance, for me to receive this award is actually validation that Davie has come of age, that we're being recognized by the Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce. It was a beautiful event, and a, and a lovely ceremony, and I'd like to thank those members of, my council member, Michelle Whitman, who joined me, and Leona, and Phil, and, who else? Oh, Alan, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry. That's right. I knew there was five altogether. How could I, thank you very much for being there with me.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I was going to bring it with me, but I, it was kind of heavy, so I, I didn't carry it out. And it's funny, I have all your names written right here, and I didn't even look at it. This weekend, August 23rd, is the Onum Celebration at Cooper City High School. That's going to be early this year, it's, starts at noon, and the ceremony starts at 2:00. My mayor's breakfast, the next one, and I'll announce it a couple of times, will be on September 12th, at Denny's on University Drive, and we have the mayor's chess, am I taking your stuff away from you? On September 13th, and then, I'm sure everybody's, Susan and Carol will have a comment, too, but we went to Joe Piccolo's retirement from the fire rescue the other day, and it was really very lovely, and a nice crowd, and he's really been a great asset to, to our, our fire rescue department, acting as the union president for a number of years, so we're going to miss him. Got a lovely family. I'm going to steal this one from you, congratulations to our very own Kevin from Parks and Rec.
Stole it from me.
He said, do you, do you want to see my, my pictures from our European trip? And he's flashing pictures, and all of a sudden, I said, wait, what's that?
What's she holding?
And she's holding a picture of a sonogram.
Yay!
We want to congratulate Kevin, he's going to, going to be a daddy, so that's really great. I forgot to bring it, but I'm going to ask staff, there's a special hotline number put out by the Wildlife, whatever that department is.
FWC?
Yeah. To protect wildlife, because there's been a lot of incidents lately of people abusing or killing wildlife, and if you ever see that, there's a, there's a contact, I'm going to ask if we can put that on our, on our webpage. Then I'm just going to take the liberty. I was reviewing the meeting minutes from the June 24th Public Art Advisory Committee meeting, and like counsel to support to move forward with three public art, open c-. and like counsel, uh, to, to support to move forward with three public art open calls that are included in the town's public art master plan. And I'm gonna take each one individually and then ask for you to just give me a, a, area. Uh, on the utility box wraps, uh, phase two, Michael Friend made a motion to approve the eighteen locations, new locations for utility box wraps two, as laid out by towns, town staff with the theme of higher education, local town nature and local town recreation and activities. Virginia French seconded the motion and a voice vote. The motion passed unanimously. I'd like to ask council, can we give direction for?
Yes.
Them to move on with that. Thank you.
Thumbs up.
The other one is the Owl, uh, Lookout Park seating. Again, Michael Friend made a motion to move forward with the Owl Lookout Park seating area project with mosaics and colorful owl-themed artwork, as stated in the master plan. Virginia French seconded the motion. They voted unanimously.
Yes.
Um, we, would you like to move forward with that? Okay. And then the painted horses, phase two. Um, the motion was made again by Michael Friend to move forward with the open call to artists for phase two to mirror the first call to artists in phase one minus Native American tribes with the same eligibility requirements, because we already have two horses that, uh, have Native American theme. Uh, Tony Webb seconded the motion and that was voted on unanimously. Uh, the theme will be historical cultures of Davy, which could include but not limited to farming, fruit grows, education, cowboys, rodeo, flora and fauna. And we give a?
Yes.
Heads up to move forward with that? There you go, Jeff. After, and then for those of you who don't know, two, the first two painted horses have been installed, one at Robins Park Preserve and the other at Owl Lookout Park. So
Very nice.
We, uh, we've gotten some, some traction on those. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have a question for you?
Yes.
Would you repeat the date of your breakfast?
September twelfth.
You said August.
No.
That's why I'm asking.
No, I didn't say August. I said September. I said it's not until September.
Well, I was asking you because I heard August on the hearing.
Oh, yeah, no, it's September twelfth.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. But I don't have anything.
I did it all?
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm leaving you for last. Marla?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be, real quick, uh, Davy PD is hosting a cops and coffee event on September ninth at nine AM at, uh, one-five-seven-oh-one Sheridan Street. And, uh, those have been well attended, uh, so go out to that one. And if you're looking for a sports league for your child, Davy P L basketball and flag football seasons are signing up now. Uh, for more information, go ahead and visit www.davypal.org for more information. And a quick reminder, don't forget the Weekly Brothers Davy Pro Rodeo, which will be Saturday, September sixth, twenty-twenty-five at seven-thirty PM at the rodeo grounds. Advanced tickets are available at Gris Western and it, online at davyprorodeo.com. That's about all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick, uh, shout out to Joe Piccolo, Fireman Piccolo. Although he's not ending his career, he's going on to be a fireman in another, we wish him the best. And, uh, I can't believe how old those kids are, you know? They're all grown up. So congratulations, Joe, and, uh, best of luck. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. You're on. I may have to leave before you finish.
They're, they're gonna have to yield some of their time to me because I've got a lot of fun stuff to talk about. But the first one I want to start you off with is a cute little story. My grandson started, he's five years old, started kindergarten. And if anybody was listening to Kiss Country, little Leo made the news. The funny story was, he took home in his pocket a handful of mulch from school. And he says, his mom says, "Well, what, what is this for? Why do you have mulch in your pocket?" He goes, "I'm going to build a playground in the backyard." So Kiss Country, Deena B saw it on Jenny's Facebook page, started laughing hysterical and used it for, as one of the first day back school stories and said, "Either this kid's gonna be a thief or an entrepreneur." So I just thought you'd like to hear that funny story. And we do have it on recording and it's the cutest thing. Um, as you know, and it's an honor for me to be representative of the Broward League of Cities and the Florida League of Cities, thanks to you all and your confidence that you, I think, still have in me. Um, I was reappointed to the Board of Directors for the Florida League of Cities and we held our conference, um, in Orlando this past week. Um, the first of the conference was the Florida League of Mayors. I was asked to attend the Florida League of Mayors as our, um, Weston Mayor, Margaret Peggy Brown, was installed as the president of the Florida League of Mayors. So she and I are kind of like, we can't talk sunshine up here. So we're like each other's lifeline. Whenever you need to call a friend, dial a prayer or reach out, uh, Peggy is mine and I am hers, so it's, she's a good friend. Um, but she gives her regards to all of you and she looks forward to their new agenda for the Florida League of Mayors as they go forward in making our cities work. It'll be the theme going forward, which is very good. Um, the Florida League of Cities had a lo, a very good conference. Um, Moss, um, Mossiana Lewis, our deputy mayor was, uh, manager, was also there. Um, I ran into him in a few hallways as we were going from one way to the other, um, trying to divide and conquer, I'm sure, many of the, uh, various workshops as well as meetings. I'm on the Federal Action Strike Team, which is lobbyist for federal issues. I'm on the Advocacy Committee, which is state issues that we're working on. And, um, so a lot of those issues, we discussed, uh, wrap up and I'll share those with you. As you know, most of the legislation that passed, um, and what probably got killed were, we may see revised again next year, um, in this upcoming session. One of the biggest subjects that we did talk about, however, um, was understanding Florida Doge. As you know, the national, uh, has their Doge, um, and the state has their Doge. And, um, quite frankly, I always joke to everybody when I was up there and even staff knows, I'll say, "Even Doge me," if you have to. Um, anybody want to tell me how to spend my money more wisely? And if I'm doing something wasteful, I want to know about it, but just don't take away my hairdresser or my nails. Um, but at this, at the town level, we all, there's always a good opportunity for us to look at ways that we could do s, things better. And I think that's the same approach that they're attempting to do. And, um, one of the things they did is they had Eric Hues with the Doge Committee. By the way, the fellow reminded me of Urkel, very short, kind of a squeaky little voice that is very annoying. So the fact that I sat there for an hour, listening to all of it, his content, though, however, was very good. And they're out, they're there not to try to out, to get us as to mu, as much as to try to help us improve or ways of looking at people who really are doing things that probably they should not be doing all the way. There was a very good speaker, if anybody gets an opportunity to listen to a Pulitzer Prize winner, author, Joe, um, Meacham. He spoke about the integrity and the insights in leadership, democracy and the American story. He writes a lot of really good historical books and he was seventeen years in the writing and following, shadowing and working with, um, the Bush family. So that was an interesting concept in the way that he had approached leadership and the various challenges we all have, um, politically in trying to unite our country together in leadership. So that was very good. Um, the other and most important thing, I think I'll leave you all with, is this chocolate gavel that Peggy gave me. I will eat it later. And then, um, there was also, John, uh, also gave a book that I'll share and that's, um, the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States as written and narrated through various other things. He talked about those issues for us. I'll keep it on my desk. Anybody have any doubts, you can come and see. Um, the league went over their budget. They also are building a new facility in Orlando. And believe it or not, it's under budget and it's on time, which I was very proud to hear, forty thousand square foot facility of the Broward, uh, Florida League of Cities, um, that provides many of the services that, uh, many of the four hundred and eleven municipalities around the state, um, take advantage of, including a lot of us. One of the good and important things, um, we also have, very quickly, Mayor, before you leave, is a Florida formula toolkit. What that will be is a, I guess it's a sixty-second, uh, little video that talks about what cities do and, you know, how we work. Um, it's very good to get ahead of what they're proposing in property taxes. Um, as you know, we can educate, but we cannot tell people how to vote according to what the state statutes say. Um, but we can educate our populations on how we spend your money. And the biggest thing to be aware of is that we spend a lot of it on the police and fire. We also spend a lot on roadwork and, uh, potholes, culverts and making our cities work. So believe it or not, within, and parks and rec and activities. So we don't want to look at areas where we're gonna be cutting those, so it's very education. They can do it in sixty seconds. I doubt I could. So the toolkit's available for us. We can tailor it to us. The league has already did the heavy lift for us and it's a good little toolkit for all of us. Um, I'm gonna also forward a lot of that, uh, to all of you to, um, be able to review. Um, but it was five days and four nights of a long, and I'm so happy to be home, so. I'm back.
Thank you very much. And before I go on to the next, I just, I got a text, um, from Hal Axler. Um, they, at a HO, he was in the middle of an HOA meeting and he wanted to ask me a question. Um, they live in the, in Honey Lake, which is right next to Western High School. And he says, "I'm at our HOA meeting and the conversation is the increasing issue we are having with Western High School parents using our community as a parking and, uh, drop-off. We really need the town to get involved and help us. It's destroying our lawns. It's, you know, so I just."
Mayor, we've, we've been working on that.
Oh, you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. I, I promised him I would bring it up before I left, so I just brought that up. Um, do you have anything for us tonight, Mr. Blamette?
No.
Mr. Weinfall?
I have nothing to add, Mayor.
And no objections?
No objections.
We're adjourned.